Hi everyone, I'm Daniel, I'm a BFA III in the acting program. Just two thoughts I wanted to share. For those who attended the Parents Weekend luncheon last week, President Levine gave a five-minute speech addressing the Al Jazeera article that I'm sure everyone's read. And with all due respect to President Levine, he stumbled through five minutes of what sounded like a defensive approach on the side of the school, and the five minutes he spent on it was, in my opinion, inappropriate. And I think that the school deserves a stronger voice from our president in response to this. And so I was just listening to it and I thought it was, the way he addressed it was unorganized and inappropriate. And the students deserve a stronger response. And just on-
Hi, I guess in light of Daniel's question, I see one administrator here, and I'm just probably overwhelmed by faces, but I think one of the specificities of this event at CalArts has a lot to do with our disappointment and how the event and the repercussions of the event were handled by administration. And so I think the conversation needs to be involving that a little more. So I'm just kind of curious where they are. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Natalie, I'm a staff member, and this whole process has really bothered me, coming from another institution, and I sort of have some questions. First, is having an HR director appropriate for Title IX advisor? And when an institution is dealing with, whatever you title you want to call it, sexual misconduct, rape and whatnot, why aren't the police immediately involved? That I don't understand. And I'm gonna put it like this, it is not fair to the victim or the perpetrator to not have the police involved, because you need to have, you need to have both involved, because you need both sides of the story to be fairly told.
But isn't it because the school is not involved?
Yes. But that's the side of the, that's the, but we, again, we don't know what's going on. We don't know what's going on. And that's, that is what is so confusing here in this story. And we need to, I think we need to know more, we need more transparency. We don't know what other crimes are going on here at CalArts, and I think that that's where your problem here too. What else is going on here? So-
Hi, I'm Regina. This is a question that comes up a lot, why victims don't go to the police? The police has a worse record than college investigators do. I have had a lot of friends who've gone to the police and they get harassed by police. Police are not trained to deal with these incidents. Only 2% of these cases actually result in the perpetrator being jailed. It's hard to prove that rape happened. The reason why students go to their school is because they deserve a safe campus, at least. And it'd be, it'd be so dangerous to force victims, force college investigators to go directly to the police after they receive a complaint, because that would just silence more survivors and they would not come forward. And asking victims, survivors, to go to the police is a form of victim blaming. It's putting the burden on them to do something about this. And I'm just going through like a list in my head of reasons why, you know, I don't discourage you to go to the police, there's, there's a lot of ways to go about this. I have a friend who didn't go to the police because she's a woman of color, and, you know, there's that too. I just think that we need to have a conversation about the different options that survivors Unfortunately, you know, we're at a time where there's no place that will give you justice. Obviously, you know, schools are not trained, and neither are police officers. Our legal system is really fucked up, so.
Hi, I'm an MFA grad from the music school. And I just want to say something I've noticed and something I want. What I've noticed, whether it's online or in groups, the conversation tends to revolve around the victim. I think that in itself expresses victim blaming. Not that victims don't need help, but not in the court of public opinion. So my number one thing that I want, I want to name the fucking rapist. I want it in every email that goes out to us alumni, to the community, because if you don't, you're protecting the rapist, in the same way that victim blaming is protecting the rapist. Do we focus on the murdered victims? No. Do we focus on the murderer? And that's the only way. Consequences will begin to be affected instead of criminal acts protected.
Hi, I'm Shayna, MFA acting first year. And my heart really goes out to women. So the most important thing that I feel just even in this room right now is for every girl, young woman, to focus on each other, and that we have the ability, not only to heal each other and heal ourselves, but we have the ability and the power to heal men and the mentality that they are raised in. The power, the change, what we want is in our hands. So if we can come together just in this one moment, let's continue to support our sisters, because we have it in our hands. It's me, it's you, it's you, we can do this. We don't need anybody else to necessarily regulate it. So let's heal ourselves and let's heal the world.
Hi, hello, I'm Gloria. I wrote this down because it's like a really complicated thing for me to like talk about. So I come from an abolitionist perspective, and I'm also like thinking about this and the whole conversation around. I'm really like interested in going beyond a punitive-based response, because I really wanna focus on something that is gonna transform the culture of rape. Now we're like, we're only answering to things once somebody gets raped. I'm interested in stopping that, and I'm also interested in providing support for people to stop raping people, have their friends hold them accountable, like really changing the culture of rape. And it's a really hard thing to dialogue, cause I, to talk about, because I do believe that, you know, I, I do believe that the empowerment process of somebody regain, after being a victim, like their needs are necessary, but also I'm interested in providing tools and sustainable ways for people to stop raping. So that's where I'm interested in taking the dialogue and open it up.
Hi, something really quick to the men here to call out your friends when they are saying anything even close to inappropriate.
Hi, I'm Aubrey Lynn, I'm an MFA here, in the school theater. Thinking about what Gloria said about culture, and I see educational institutes as culture-making institutes. And we all have a culture here, right? We all have a reputation, what is CalArts, what is not CalArts? And a lot of that is kind of misstated and sometimes misguided. But we learn things while we're here, we learn how to respond to each other, we learn how to respond to each other's work, we set up a dialogue. My vocabulary has changed radically in the three years that I have been here, and so is my way of thinking about things. And as a culture-making institute, I invite us all to engage each other about how do we move away from rape culture? I think it's really hard to recognize the way in which we all engage in it, the way in which we see it on billboards and in song lyrics, the way in which we've allowed things to be said in the hallways and we never called each other out. I know I have allowed things to be said in my presence that I feel like if this wasn't such a small town, I probably would have spoken up. And so my question is, is like, how do we invite each other to shift culture? How do we invite each other to, to change the way that we think about rape and the way we think about rape culture? And how do we call each other out on a daily basis when we are dismissive of the way in which we are also violent toward each other, silently, or loudly, or publicly, or privately?
Hi, my name's Dave, I'm a MFA in graphic design. Did my undergrad in University of Illinois Chicago, and this whole thing has got me thinking, and that there's, the resources in place here are non-existent, or I don't know about them. And I went back thinking about my orientation, I was an orientation leader. And students that enter the university go through a diversity training and campus advocacy network training, and this lasts hours, this is all day. And it talks about domestic violence, sexual assault, racial things, work misconduct, all those different things. And I wouldn't even know where to begin to find that in an institution here. So I guess my proposal is, for anyone that's interested in having that conversation, whether it's here today or outside of that, but I think that's something that we should talk about in providing those resources. And I think there's other universities that have those in place and we can use that as a model. And yeah, thanks.
Hi, my name is Evangeline, I'm in, I'm in the theater school. So I, as ripped up as I am on the inside to hear of this incident and to know that these incidents go on all the, you know, all the time, not just here but other places, my heart is so full and so fucking proud of our community for showing up. In the year and a couple of months that I have been here, I've never seen this kind of solidarity, and it really gives me hope. I think this is a pivotal moment for us. We have an opportunity here, not just to change our attitude around gender, sexual assault, whatever, violence, equality of all kinds, but also really to reach across the other kinds of divides that exist here in this institution. I don't need to get into it. But I think that there's amazing, amazing potential here, the biggest resource we have is each other. And I, I just want to encourage everyone to carry with you, from this day, the solidarity that we have about really wanting change, to really carry this forward. And I think it's an amazing opportunity. I mean, how, how amazing would it be if CalArts, if our reputation was that we were like the safest fucking place to be? And the mo, you know, if, what if, if this is the moment when we, when we really turn around? So just, just soak up this moment and carry it forward. I, I offer that to you. Thank you for listening.
Hi, something that I find particularly upsetting is that the administration has pretending that it's just business as usual, issued a minor report here and there, just sent out a small note. And this hasn't happened before this got into the news. Like, why can't this be prevented and why can't we see that steps are being taken to make sure that this doesn't happen again?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Darius Rodell Booker, I'm an MFA I actor. I love this word of accountability, I wanna go back to it, some of the other CalArtsians have spoken about it as well. I come from Atlanta, Georgia, East Coast, humid hot, any of my Georgias in here? Yeah, yeah? Okay, okay, okay. So, and I was a part of an organization for years called Men Can Stop Violence, and it was about specifically dealing with this type of issue. I just wanna speak on one thing in particular. I love, first of all, the fact that the, the men are coming up and they're giving their point, they're talking about it. We need more of that. Men, I'm a southern gentleman, one thing that we can do as far as accountability back home is make sure that the women, when they get out of class, you walk them to your apartments, walk them to their dorms, make sure women don't walk alone. It got so bad, our part, our, our college, our undergrad was, the women at our undergrad was issued maces and bats. I'm not saying that needs to happen here, to where every woman is walking around with a bat, but just make sure like, you know, hold each other accountable, guys. Hold each other accountable and just, you know, make sure the women are okay, make sure they're safe.
Okay, thank you. This is not a men's issue, and it's not a ma, male responsibility to protect me and my friends. We can protect ourselves. I think it's interesting that everyone is talking about rape culture as if it's this like roaming ghost that like follows us around. It's something we all actively participate in, it's not a specific event, it's a systematic violence against every woman at this school and in the world. And to focus on the specific, or the, a specific perpetrator, to name a specific survivor is to not acknowledge that this is systematic, this is institutional, and that this is being enabled and assimilated into the structure and institution of this academic place. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. But I think it's important, rather than to name the people that were involved in this, this incident, but to name the people that let it happen and let it, let it be dealt with the way that it was, which is Charmaine, what's her last name?
Charmaine Chael.
Cheryl, Kim Russo, and Stephen Levine. And whatever other names anyone wants to add. If we want accountability or call-out culture, you call out the institution, you call out the people in power, you call out the people signing the checks. You don't call out the other people suffering with you. And the girls have to stand together and call out the people that allow an institution to enable rape.
Hi, I've been out of breath since the meeting on Tuesday, and I couldn't figure out why. I had an incident last fall when I first got here that I didn't allow myself to consider assault, because a boy that I was at this party with told me that it looked like I had wanted it. And I convinced myself, like, you know, I was drunk enough, whatever. And so, you know, figuring that out just now, thanks to everything that we've been talking about. And I also wanted to mention how horrified I was by a few things that were said on Tuesday. Firstly, using the term sexual misconduct at all as an umbrella term was kind of horrific. I think the term misconduct, it really, I guess shrinks the issue, I don't, I don't really have to explain it. And also that the only concrete thing that was said was basically, "Don't get drunk, because you'll get raped." That's, that's what I got from that, and I was, I was kind of terrified that that's where we're going at this point. So that's, that's my piece.
I really appreciate this meeting, and I also just want to say that about the walking women home protection thing, it's important for friends to protect each other, any friends, but saying that if you don't have a male friend protecting you when you're walking home, there's gonna be people who might rape you, that's totally wrong. We need to, it is a huge culture problem and we need to address that, not in, it's your fault if it happened to you. So that's just the protection thing, just, I just, thank you. Just very briefly, I just want to point out that rape is something that doesn't just happen to women. And that men, young men, transgender men, transgender women, this is applicable to everyone, not just women.
Hi, my name is Artemis, I'm a BFA II, and I definitely feel more comfortable walking in the streets when there's a guy next to me. And I really, I really, really wish that it wasn't that way. I really, really do, but this is just like, this is the fact of life, that this is an issue not just at this school, but all across the world. And I think that we really need to change the way that we think about it. And I kind of, I kind of grew up kind of feeling like my body was a weapon and I had to like, I had to, you know, be careful because I was dangerous, and I just, I think that that's really wrong.
Hi, I'm Berenice Menno, I'm a faculty in the School of Film and Video. I just want to add a very minor point about how I perceive the rape culture on campus. And actually, this story has reawakened something in me which was very long buried. I don't know, it's not a true confession or whatnot, it's just a fact. In the early eighties, I was admitted in the PhD program of a Yale Drama School. I went there, I was a French student, an exchange student, who was considered as the champagne of champagne of my academic career in the United States. And I had gone on campus and I had gone through a series of interviews that really loved me, I really loved them. And then we started talking about the practicality of my arrival on campus, and then they started to tell me, you know, we have all these screenings, these events, and blah, 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 but you know, there's a lot of rape on campus. So if you go to a screening at night, we have these minivans, and you have to make sure that you're going to call a minivan. And I was so horrified that I went to another university that would only take me in an MA program that was in New York. And once in New York, I was told, you know, Berenice, you should never take the subway alone. I did. I was never raped in New York, but I know for a fact that all these years, they were raped on the campus of Yale University. So I just realized that I had internalized this, it's part of my biography that I never really discussed with anybody, because people would say, "Why did you not go to Yale Drama School?" And I'd say, "Oh, bro, you know, I didn't really like the campus," whatever. That's bullshit. I was afraid. I think that there is, and we're talking about the early eighties, right? There is this culture here that makes you more or less accept the fact that if you're a woman on campus, there's going to be rape. The second thing is that men are comparing in you, I want you to send you to a wonderful movie by Kermit Dick about rape in the military. And what does it say? That in the military, they also have this thing, "Honey, never walk back to your barracks alone at home, get a buddy to walk you back." Guess what? The buddy becomes the rapist. Thirdly, of course, the issue of rape, whether it's women being raped or men being raped, it's a question of men, I really, really appreciated what this gentleman said, even if maybe some people didn't appreciate it, he was trying to say something that rape is a question of men, it's a question of how men address the issue of sexual violence. And I thank you, my friend, for having said that, and I'm sorry that you were a little rebuked, but we are all in this together. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robin, and I'm a staff member here. And I just want to remind us all that all these issues we're talking about are not a student issue, they're an issue for all of us as human beings. And I've been here two years, and from the first week I arrived here, and it was the fall and the clock had changed, I had been complaining about the poor lighting in the parking lot. And I was invited to sit on the, to be a part of the Campus Wide Safety and Security Committee. And naively enough, I thought we were talking about the safety and security of our whole community, when in fact, I sat in this meeting, month to month, two, three-hour meetings with a diverse group of faculty, staff, administrators, and student representatives. And we talked about safe, legitimate places for students to drink alcohol on campus. That was the extent of, that was the main theme of the Safety and Security Committee meeting, to the point where I, I just stopped attending. So I just want to let you all know that, you know, when you say administrators and you throw a big net around everyone who's a non-student, I'd like you to think twice. There's a lot of us on this campus that are here day in and day out, forty-five plus hours a week, and we care about your safety, and we need to think about safety as a community. Thank you.
I really think it's beautiful that all of you are here. I really feel that this is the voice of our community, and it really pains me to see the megalomaniac few representing our voice, purporting that they're the voice of the student body. So I really want to invite everyone to continue this dialogue. And if you're too afraid to speak in public, or if you have a friend who wasn't able to make it, I please invite you to take yourself to the internet, go to yourfellowstudents.com, you can post your anonymous comments there, voice your opinions, let's show our community our real voice. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Christine, I'm a faculty member. I just wanted to say one thing about the issue of safety. The case that triggered this coming together of us to talk about our community in general didn't happen when somebody was walking alone in the middle of the night in some space that wasn't littered without a male friend, it happened between two people who knew each other well. And that is where ma, where most rapes happen, whoever they happen to, whoever is the perpetrators. So I, I think, you know, we should just keep that in mind, that rape is actually predominantly something that happens between people who know each other in places where they actually, are not in public, they're places they know, they're places where actually they usually feel safe. And that's a different issue than having surveillance and policing, et cetera.
We want to thank all of you who've been stepping up to speak out, and we know that what was spoken just now is resonating and echoing through this hallway. The calls that we, the themes that seem to be emerging in terms of now starting to move into the part of this meeting where we want to strategize or think about moving forward actions, there seem to be a lot of you who spoke about wanting to change policies on this campus, right? Whether it was policies around transparency, around consequences, thinking about perhaps having a task force, questions about what resources does the campus provide- having a task force, questions about what resources does the campus provide for you that would help you address issues of rape and sexual assault. But there were also a lot of you who spoke about the need to change the culture of violence that is pervasive on this campus and in our society at large. I heard people talk about maybe having trainings, right, when students come in and are getting oriented toward this campus, that deal with gender, violence, rape, sexual assault. I also heard people talk about how moving it is to see the power of this community coming together, to stand together, to do something, and move forward on this issue. What I know, and this is an obvious point, you are all artists. And using your art, using your voice, using strategies from other campuses, do you all have a Take Back the Night event here?
No.
Okay.
So we've had one for many years at Cal State Northridge, so if you need any ideas on organizing, we can help out with that.
So for those of you who aren't familiar with Take Back the Night, it's basically a time where people come together and actually march across the campus and talk about taking back the night, making the campus safe. But then, it culminates in a form like this, where survivors get to tell their stories. And it's a very powerful event, because we know the statistics on rape and sexual assault are astounding, right, across the country. One in four, one in three. Every five minutes, somebody is getting sexually assaulted across the US, right? And as the last speaker pointed out, it is not predominantly strangers who are doing this, it is people we know in safe spaces, or so-called safe spaces, in our homes, in our dorms, in our apartments, et cetera. So I think that as we move forward, perhaps thinking about both sides, you know, of the two themes that have emerged from those who have spoken so far, on the policy level, ideas about how you might want to move forward as a community, and on the cultural level, you know, changing the culture of violence on a campus, those would be two.
Yeah, I just want to agree. For me, I heard the idea of support for survivors. So it seems really important that you work towards organizing that policy-based things. You need to find out what you have, what you need to organize around it. There's a lot of examples. But the community-building part is really powerful. Cal Arts is not this building. It is not the administrators, they're part of it. It's not the faculty. It's all of you. The students are core. There would not be a Cal Arts without students. Faculty are important, staff are very important, administrators are important. But the point here is how do you come together with, around this, but moving forward, not just against something, but what are you for? Would be the question I'd ask, is what are you for? I'm gonna just throw out one thing, and then we won't invite more people up, is to look into the notion of transformative justice. Transformative justice basically says the whole community is responsible and needs to hold people accountable. That our goal is not to find a perpetrator and a victim, but to recognize we are all victimized by a culture of violence. And that we need to work towards changing the culture so that everyone is seen as being accountable to others, and accountable to creating an environment where violence is not acceptable, where a respectful community is what we see as the norm. We wanted to take, Sheena and I sadly both have obligations, and we're called in shortly for this, but we're here for another half hour. So, but we'd like to hear from you all again, getting specific about what you would like to see done. And I really think when we do this, we need three or four note-takers, people that are recording this. We have some butcher block paper up here and some pens, so if anybody wants to volunteer to do that, because we can say a lot, but the idea is how do we take it forward? So before we leave in the next half hour, we also want to help you all generate ideas of how you're gonna move forward, where are you gonna take this? Okay? So the point here is to invite you up, specific ideas you have for addressing these areas. Sheena divided them in two, I had three, support for survivors, policy-based issues, and community building. So what specific ideas do you have? And really, I'm asking for accountability. There was a gentleman that came up and spoke and said he would be responsible for looking into policies. So I don't know who that was, where he is now, but what we need is people who will say, "I'll head that up. I'll take the lead on that. I'll work with my friends to help make this happen." Okay? So it's an invitation, come forward.
Hi, I'm Cameron. I'm a BFA III actor. And I'd say one small thing that doesn't necessarily have to do with the faculty would be to reexamine friendship, and what an individual person that you care about resonates in your life. Not necessarily in the way that they're just someone who fills up a space that, you know, if you need to get drunk with someone, they're just there to, you know, small-talk, someone who you mutually take care of. There is one event in high school where me personally, I was in a situation where I was getting really drunk with my friends. And me, I was hanging out with this guy I wasn't as friends with, who's this homosexual male. And I got really drunk, and he was stronger than me, and he started, you know, accosting me. And, you know, my friends could have laughed that off and thought it was hilarious, but I was actually helpless. I, you know, I couldn't get away, I was cornered. I was really drunk, so I couldn't really, you know, help myself. Luckily, nothing happened, but, and this doesn't necessarily have to result in violence either, but my friends were good enough to see that I was in a situation where I was, you know, I was laughing at it, but like, deep down, I was scared, and my friends knew me well enough that they could see it in my eyes, that they were able to transition into a way to, you know, help me out of it. They could have just as easily walked out of the room, let me be, and, you know, something, something could have happened. I mean, I don't know what, but I'm sure that everybody here could attest to something similar like that, as far as being able to see, like, something that looks seemingly playful on the surface, that's actually where people actually hide how scared they could actually be sometimes. And it's really about empathy and being able to penetrate that, and what would I do in that situation, what would I want somebody to do for me? And not necessarily even a friend, it could be an acquaintance, someone you see around. Just really be a good person in that way. And, you know, step outside of yourself. Even if you are an introverted person, it's scary, but sometimes you have to be brave. And that's what I have to say about that.
I think, however the policy is restructured, that it truly becomes no tolerance. And one of the reasons why we're all here is because, in reference to the article that we all read, we understand that a student was, in some ways, disrespected by the faculty, by the administration in this investigation. And how can, how can policy move forward so that the victim is truly respected? And I think rape should be grounds for immediate expulsion.
There seems to be an emphasis on how to avoid rape, but we should be focusing on how not to rape. And I think it's important to realize that ninety percent of the time, perpetrators, sexual offenders, rapists are victims themselves, and they need just as much help. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Zach. I'm a BFA IV actor, and I'm also the Student Council President. I just wanted to take a second to talk about consent. I think culturally, the phrase "no" means "no" is harmful and misleading, because it implies that someone has your consent until you take it away from them. That's not how consent works. The truth is, someone does not have your consent until you give it to them. The truth is that "yes" means "yes," and I think that's something that needs to permeate the culture. Additionally, I just wanted to say that if you ever need help, if you ever need to talk to someone and don't feel safe, if you ever feel like you don't, you maybe don't trust the pathways that have been given to you in this institution to voice your fears, your concerns, your issues, Student Council would love to hear from you. We represent you, and we can't speak for you unless we know how you feel. So please come find us. We're in Cafe A every Thursday at 5:00 PM. All of our meetings are open. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, though, with the "yes" means "yes" thing, because even if somebody is giving consent up to a point, the moment that "yes" changes to a "no," "no" means "no." So sometimes, you know, I just want to be a little vigilant about that.
My name is Cory. I'm an MFA II in art. I'm also one of the student senators. And I would like to say, a lot of the problems within this institution and within the ways in which rape survivors have been treated comes from the power structure within this institution. The power structure in this institution has to change. Students don't have enough power, faculty does not have enough power. People at the top are dictating to us below what happens here. We can't get administrators to meet with us, we can't get the Board of Trustees to talk to us. I had to actually organize a group of students to go in and rush the Board of Trustees meeting and hand them papers, so they know that we exist and that we want them to listen to us. We need an active and responsive board and administration. And for me, that means having shared governance. That means putting people on an equal playing field of students, staff, faculty, administrators, and board members. Everybody gets a vote, everybody has a say.
Hey, I'm Benjamin. I'm a BFA IV performer-composer, and I want to ask a question, and I want to say something that I think about. My question is, why did the article get published on Tuesday, and they didn't put up all these things about consent just all over the school, in the bathrooms while I was going, in the urinal, there is a picture of like, "consent," and all these words? Why did that happen on Friday when the parents come? Was that for the parents, or was that for us? That's my question. I don't know who did that. And that was, that was my issue. That was my issue. I felt that it was for the parents, and it was to show, from my perspective, because I don't know about it, it's a question. So thank you, thank you for answering where I came from. I felt that it was for the parents, and that was my issue. And what I, what I really have to say, what I know is, rape isn't just this one thing, this one definition, that has to do a lot with physical conduct and like, violence. That is the classic definition of rape. I think rape is a spectrum. And I think that it can happen in the cafeteria right in front of your eyes, and just the way someone can look at someone else, and they didn't want that.
Rape is violence.
No, okay, that is that definition, but I think if we get so focused on rape in its most extreme sense, even when it involves murder or something extreme, we lose sight of the little things that happen just in our daily lives that we can do something about every day. When there is, you know, someone in the cafeteria and someone gives them a look, like, "I don't know you, why are you looking at me that way?" You know? If someone is looking at them and thinking about their own desires, and like, the kinds of, you know, things in their mind, and making someone else uncomfortable, that to me, it is not violence, it is not physical, but to me, that is part of the spectrum of rape. And that's where it starts. It starts with a look, it starts with an inappropriate compliment, and not to say you can't show affection or appreciation to someone else, but you have to be thinking about, you know, "I respect you, I appreciate you," not, "I'm coming from a place where I am showing my own desires." That is unacceptable to me. So I think we shouldn't get too caught up in rape being this, at its most extreme and most violent. I think we have to also acknowledge that it can happen on a very small scale, and we can't let that slip by either.
I'll be the clarification person. And I think it's important for us to name things specifically, because rape, rape is a very specific thing, but I think what you might be talking about is the ways in which we constantly objectify and sexualize people, and stop seeing them as people, but just as objects that we can use to sort of act out our desires on, right? Or our power, or our violence on, or our anger, or all these different things. So I do think it's important to not make specific terms like rape become everything, because it can, that move sometimes erases what somebody, a survivor, has gone through when we start equalizing everything. We can recognize things that lead to that most extreme point. So I thank you for that, but I just wanted to add. Our institutions get more conservative as they get older, but in spite of that, I think they can learn from their mistakes. And the first thing you have to do is admit to those mistakes.
So I'm not against expulsion, but I'm against the idea of like, well, not in my backyard, like, you're out of here, so you're gonna go somewhere else, and you may perpetuate the same harm. So I'm advocating that we expect these folks to, Cal Arts to link them up to a space where they can like, reflect on the harm they've done, and have, and gain tools where they need, they learn that they're, have like tangible ways to stop this in their lives.
Hello, my name is Jesse. I'm a MFA III, sound designer. I just wanted to bring up, you know, this idea of being accountable between each other's students, but I wanted to thank the other staff member who stepped up and, you know, bring up the question of accountability amongst non-students, teachers, administrators, between themselves. So a lot of us can agree that it's so select who we could go to for support, and it should be more unified. It's hard for us to feel safe if we feel like there's a perceived divide amongst, you know, faculty, teachers, staff. So as a question of possible solution, policy, how we can keep each other accountable, not the students, but the teachers, the administrators, in, you know, teaching each other more sensitivity to these issues, because there's an obvious lack of that up there.
Hi, my name is Michelle. I'm an MFA II in the Creative Writing Program. I'm also the Critical Studies Senator. I have a question, I think it's for the moderators. I'm wondering how drugs and alcohol play a role in rape situations, and the fact that it's not really addressed, and we're not really educated very much on it, what does that mean if I get, you know, if I get intoxicated to a point where I'm not sure if I'm able to make decisions that I'm going to agree with again the next day? And for the people who are around us, if we tell our friends, you know, "Yeah, I want to go do this," and then, you know, what does that mean for us? And how do we, how do we make informed decisions as individuals when we're, when we want to go out and use drugs and alcohol? Also, in response to the administrator who spoke about the Safety Committee meetings, I was one of, one to three students that would sit in on those meetings last year, and they were basically dominated by administration, and they were open to the whole student body, but not very, nobody showed up. So that's like opportunities for us to come forward and have a voice, and speak up on things when there are committees like this. But we as students don't know about those, and that just comes into play with transparency, and why we don't know about these sorts of meetings. and why we don't know about these sorts of meetings. And making those accessible to students. They just don't do that for us. And also, I just feel like those are opportunities, if we were given them to come forward as students and stand up and make our voices heard, yeah. Why does it take something like this for us all to come together? Why aren't students interested enough before these things happen to find out when those meetings are and to show up at them? And what can we do to increase that participation on the student level? Thank you.
Sorry. Just if you wanna ask a question, please follow the line. It looks like everybody's lining up, so just wanna honor that.
I guess there was a question in the previous speaker's comments about drug and alcohol use. Once again, whether you have consumed drugs or alcohol, consent is sort of the key here. The moment you withdraw your consent, it needs to stop. So that's basically the bottom line on that question.
Hi, my name is Anna Knecht Roser. I'm an MFA II in the Art Program. I, note takers, you ready? I have a lot of ideas. I want there to be sexual respect trainings for every staff, faculty, administrator, and student that goes to the school every year. I want to know exactly how a sexual assault complaint is filed here. I wanna know who is in charge of making those decisions. I wanna know who they consult. I wanna know what line of power that follows. And I wanna know where that power is distributed. I want a staff position. Leslie, what did I call?
I just wanna say that I'm a member of faculty and I didn't know this until a couple of days ago. If a student brings a complaint of this kind to the Administration, they're interviewed by the Title IX Coordinator, who's called Charmaine Sherrill. She is the Head of Human Resources. She has no contact with students under any other circumstances. She apparently has special training in this Title IX. And she is supervised by Michael Carter. She's not supervised by the Provost. You have to understand that the college divides into two great, big administrative groups. One is academic, which is to do with ideas, teaching, students, curriculum. And that's under the Provost. And then there's another side of the school, which is the building, the grass, the trucks, security. And Charmaine is under that administrative framework. I don't think that's right. So my understanding is that Charmaine asks the questions. There are two deputy Title IX coordinators. One of them is Kim Russo, who is in the Provost's office. The other is Travis Green, who is our new Dean of Students, who I think a lot of people feel a lot of trust for. Charmaine asks the questions, Kim takes the notes. This is written up into a report. And it's my understanding that the Provost then individually makes a decision as to what the penalty shall be. Both students are invited to appeal. Both students in this case did appeal. And then it's my understanding that the President makes a decision about what should happen with those appeals. What I notice about this structure is how it goes to an individual, which is the Provost, and then beyond the individual, to another individual who's the President. And these are things I think can change, and I hope they do.
Thank you, Leslie Dick. I just wanna follow up by saying that I wanna designate staff position with someone who does rigorous training and specializes in this. And I don't wanna take my rape complaint to someone in a cop uniform in Level 1.
Hey, my name's Aaron. I'm a BFA II in Dance Major. First, I wanted to say like, Kami used to say rape is a spectrum. I don't think it's a spectrum at all. I think it's a very direct, pinpointing thing. And I think if we make it a spectrum, it takes the power of the word. Like, if we make someone doing some sexual assault like happen somewhere, that's the same as rape. We have to default to the lowest punishment, and that's really nothing. So I think we should make rape like a very direct thing. And also, I, not to criticize the movement or nothing like that, but I think that there is a, there's a miscommunication between what, like, the message and like what needs to be done. Because I feel like, at least from my perspective, hearing about it, I don't really try to get too involved in things like that. But from what I've gathered from the situation, it feels more directed at, like, what you should do with this specific situation rather than how the Administration should take these type of incidences as a whole. Because in this situation, I'm always kind of wondering like what the student body wanted to do. And unfortunately, as much as, don't hate me when I say this, they can't actually expel him just simply because of how it probably wasn't thoroughly investigated. It really didn't go to court. So they can't just kick a student out based on a mentality, or based on a belief. But I think...
That's not true. Under Title IX, they are required to keep the campus safe and keep it from being a hostile environment.
Agreed.
They have to be 51% sure the assault happened at all. So federal law, they get federal funding. And if they violate that, they can lose federal funding.
Okay, agreed. I agree. But what I'm trying to say is that I think that rather we should focus on how, like, I don't, like, if somebody can answer for me what they want from the Administration. I mean, she did a great job. I would like that 90% of my answers answered from that. But, and I think that it would be better if we focused on how the Administration handles things as a whole, rather than trying to attack them and say, "Well, you should have done this a different way." And if they explain, "Well, we can't do this this way", then we have nothing else to say. But if we attack how they deal with it, then I think it's more effective.
But this is symptomatic, how they dealt with this is symptomatic of how other issues have also been dealt with.
Yeah, but if we just get angry about this issue and just swirl around, and then they just answer.
Some of us have concrete proposals to make about things that could happen.
Okay, I was just asking a question, like, as an...
Hey, guys, I'm Mosh. To address something that at least an idea that I think could be a step forward to some sort of action is, and I agree, that there can easily be something in terms of incoming students, first-time students here, that is an orientation, that is a workshop, that is an engaged session, not a lecture, not somebody standing up telling you this is A, B, and C, but that is something that engages the community, that involves students and faculty alike. That is a joint effort on behalf of welcoming people into our school and as a community to say that we will not tolerate this. And those, and to also recognize that the system goes beyond here and that the education of people growing up is part of the problem and something that has to change. And that, to address that also, just to say that you're coming here as a person, as a student, and this is how we as a community expect people to behave and how to respect each other. And I think that can be something that is addressed to all incoming students, however long it needs to be, an all-day thing, a series of workshops, broken-down groups, what have you. I'd be more than happy to sit on that committee to help advise and strategize that. And I would hope more people would be interested in that. And then also, again, on the note of being artists and people that are engaged in community, and not to recognize that this is something that, a culture of violence, a culture of entitlement, a culture of sexualized power, that should be addressed in our artwork, that should be taken out further than this, that can be addressed in cap, possibly other venues to address the society at large. That also, one step is to make this a safe place for us. Another step is to try to make changes beyond that as well. That's what I think.
Hi, I'm Alice. I'm MFA II Art. I'm just really concerned at the moment that there isn't really a safe space on campus where students can currently report sexual assaults. Because I feel that since there's an investigation pending on the people that were involved in asking questions, they should be suspended until that investigation is completed. Because I feel that if you're asked, if we know that they're asking questions that actually constitute harassing, harassment, sexual harassment, that's not providing a safe place where people feel that they can actually report these incidents. So it's worth shit.
Hello, my name is Jesse. I am a BFA IV Composer in Music School. I'm also a Senator on the Student Council. I think that we have really great, fantastic ideas and ways to move forward with all of this that have been presented. And I'm really looking forward to these things happening. The critical thing that I'm sensing in the room, specifically with regards to the Administration, is a really great sense of hostility, which is completely understandable. I felt hostile. And there's great mistrust. And it's gonna be very difficult to bring that trust back. But I think, coming out of all this, if a solution is made, there's never gonna be a solution. If you don't have a perfect system, we obviously need to develop a better one that will still be imperfect and continue to just drive forward to that. But one critical step in that is building trust and working with the Administration. I agree very strongly with Cory that shared governance is gonna be a critical facet in that. And that means that we need to have trust in our Administration. We're not going to get that today, of course, obviously. But the pressure's on now, and that needs to remain pressure, not hostility, because things will change so much in such a more powerful way if we work together, the students, the staff, and the faculty, with the Administration instead of against them. Because then they're trying to solve things, not seeing what we're doing. And we're trying to solve things without the power that they currently have. And pressure's on for them to change. We need to work together and with the Administration to make these things happen.
I'd like to make a concrete proposal as a first step towards shared governance. And that is that a task force get immediately convened that has two members of the Administration, two members of the Faculty, two members of Staff, at least one member or two members of the Michael Carter side of the Administration, and a number of students on it. And I'm prepared to act as coordinator to set up the first meeting, which I propose to be next Thursday, at common time, when we're all supposed to be free. But unless we actually start having formal structures, we can't achieve anything. So if we have a meeting next week and if people from each of the groups come, maybe we can start to formulate how we're going to proceed forward to develop new policies and develop these other things that are going to happen.
Hello, my name is Sophia Ferriero, and I'm a BFA II Actress. I just think it's important to address that there is not one type of victim in the sense that the media tends to portray a victim as this way or that they're supposed to act that way or that the correct way to overcome an experience is through a specific route. But that's not accurate. And just as we're all individuals in this room, victims are all individuals. So the way in which a victim chooses to seek help for their experience can be as complex and multifaceted as we are individuals. Therefore, all the proposals that are coming forward today should be put into action in the sense that what may work for one person won't work for another. So setting up a community of students possibly, to have a group where students can talk to other students, setting up a task force that could be established. Different things work for different people. Possibly contacting the police. Having more interaction with the police would work for different people. And the way that we can create a safer community is to create the resources for victims to get the help that they need.
Hi, my name is Rachel. I'm an MFA I in Film Directing. And on the, on resources, I would really like there to be a separate advocate or the term I also use is crisis counselor that can be contacted, especially over the weekend or late at night, possibly. And if that resource is already there, it's another thing for the orientation. People who talk about programming. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacob. Sorry if I'm gonna ridicule it. But as I've been listening when I first came here, a big thought of mine, whenever groups like this convene to talk about things like this, is the fear that it's the talking to the chorus and everyone here agrees with everything that's being said. And the people we want these thoughts to get to wouldn't come to a meeting like this. And so it won't go out of the space where everyone's in agreeance. And that's a big fear of mine. And through listening to this, it's been dissuaded a fair amount or moved in a different direction of realizing that, I think, I almost see there as being like, like two kinds of rape, if that's... In that there's the rapist that's setting out to rape someone when they wake up in the morning and they're wanting to do that. And then there's the person that will not understand that the other person doesn't want them to continue. Which, with the new laws going into place of the "yes means yes" as opposed to the "no means no", I think, and these types of conversations, that second kind, I think, will be decreased. But that second kind, I think, is, has the potential for it to be all of us. Especially with the questions about drugs and alcohol and how they play a part into these types of cases. Concerns and scares me especially because, for instance, for us, Halloween is coming up next week and it's stereotypically, large amounts of alcohol and drug use are gonna be used that night. And I'm scared at who's going to wake up on Saturday and feel that they have been violated by someone that's here right now talking about how much they can't understand or believe that someone would be raped and how horrible that is. And it scares me. And I don't know, when the question was asked about drugs and alcohol, I feel like, I'm not sure if, when you spoke, if you answered her question or... Because what I got at it from that question was, if on the night you're using drugs and alcohol and in the moment you think you're saying yes, but you're in an altered state, but in the morning, when you're no longer under the influence of those drugs, you disagree with those decisions, where do you stand? I honestly, I'm not...
Like, one of the things for me personally about this incident is the not knowing, the uncertainty, and the fear that comes around these issues, especially from hearing from a third party about something that has happened at this school. With that fear, I kind of wanna talk about our personal agency and how we came to this school as beings and really emphasize this holistic approach, that we are individuals. And to treat our environment with love, like, and not to be living in fear and not to, and have an incident like this that really does emphasize fear. But how do we take that back to something of difficult love to understand and to communicate with one another and to be with one another as a community? I just want us to be a community. That's all.
I want to comment on the concept of "take back the night", "take". I want to comment on what James Benning said. James Benning and I, we disagree on a lot of things, but we have a similar passé as Marxist. And, you know, so we've read our classics. And one of the things... And one of the things that Engels said is that an institution, an organization, a state, that may have been started for a certain purpose at some point, solidifies into continuing to exist just for its own interest. And I also have a past in the student movement in another country, but I never forgot that. You take back, meaning that, and it's not individuals within an institution. I don't think we can single out X, Y, or Z. It's the institution. If you do not fight the institution, if you do not exact from the institution what you want, it will never happen. And it's a dialectic that has been making history. Dialectic is an old Marxist term too, but I'm not ashamed of it. It's about working with the administration, knowing that what the administration is doing now is just protecting itself. And I just want to give you... I'm going to tell you another story. Only I'm going to make you laugh. I failed the sexual harassment test because the questions were posed in such a way, you know, A, B, C, D. I was never in a situation to decide A is very drunk, B is medium drunk, C is half-drunk, D is not drunk at all, or whatever. These questions are made to protect the school from a legal point of view. They do not reflect real life. And the institution is not ready to do anything else but legal issues. And so we have to force them. We have to take back. And that's what I know that you guys are capable of doing. Thank you.
Okay, you guys were awesome. That was amazing. You have a lot of work to do. We all have a lot of work to do. Your campus is not unique, but you have the resources to do it and to take back the campus and take back the curriculum and take back what it means to be creative artist. We wrote down eight things. I want one person to stand up and say they're going to take responsibility for organizing around this. I mean, if you don't want to do it, we'll find somebody else. But here we go. The process of reporting rapes needs to be clarified and be transparent. Yes.
We kept hearing that you need a different process to report. So, different...
Okay. Support, some kind of a crisis center, safe space. So support for survivors, for people who are... Okay, and your name? Vivi? Thank you. The third one we had is training for staff, administrators, and students. So ongoing training. I got, okay, and... Somebody else, we need another person to help out with this. It's a big job. And you've got another one behind you. There's a gentleman back there. Okay, the third one or fourth, I don't know, it's shared governance. Working on shared governance. Okay, we've got a...
Question about the task force to work on shared governance.
Is it general issue across the whole institution? Are we talking about shared governance to set up something to do something specifically about sexual assault?
No, I think it's much broader than that. You have to start somewhere, so there was... Well, that's why I had those as separate things. But I thought there would be maybe a group that wants to work on shared governance broadly. But if you want to group them together, that's fine. We did have a couple people raise their hand. Your name? Okay. Somebody you guys can tell. So policies about sexual assault, they need to be reviewed.
Can I do that too?
Yeah. Along with other people, hopefully. Because the whole point of this is not one person's responsible. There isn't one person that can do this. It has to be a community effort. But we want one person as a point person. There's a general comment about transparency, about procedures, and specifically about the procedures to do with sexual assault. Somebody in the back. Your name? Oh, he's waving. Anybody? Okay, excellent. Are you working on a task force specifically about sexual assault? Is that what...
When I was trying to deal with, kind of set up a group that would start to deal with all these issues, in a way. I thought maybe a lot.
Well, the thing is, there's a number of ways to organize anything. But you all came together as individuals, were trying to create a community and actually have this sort of grassroots action to move things forward. Hopefully, people will connect with each other. That's a goal. But I don't think it's as helpful at this moment to create one body because the responsibility is everybody's. So if we get multiple people to step forward. I did hear a conversation about informal use of art and artwork as a way to communicate within the community, but then outside of the community. So using your art as a way to discuss and address and to bring more attention to these issues.
How about respecting art?
Okay, so that could be part of that group's goal, is helping people respect art, which I understand has not happened recently necessarily.
Perhaps we could frame that one a little more broadly. Using art to address the culture of violence, if somebody wanted to. Whether it's through organizing an event, perhaps, that happens that focuses on this issue, or whether...okay, we have somebody on the line.
Jasmine, thank you very much. And then, thank you, Jasmine. The last one is "Take Back the Night", which we already got somebody to step forward. Can you tell us who you are again?
She's right there.
Excellent. Okay, great. The other question I have for you, and this would be partly for the organizers for today, is do you want to meet again? I'm not saying with us, we're here today. But this is an incredibly powerful group of people coming together, an opportunity to talk and to move forward. I always, when I leave someplace, I ask, "Do you want to set another date?" Because when we don't, it dissipates. And people's lives are busy, and other things happen, and big concerns come up. So is it next week? What is today, Thursday? Next week at four o'clock, right here? Okay, next week at four o'clock, the conversation will continue about these issues right here. I think I'm going to join Sheena here in really, really thanking you all for your respect for each other, the great ideas, and for your deep self-willingness, yeah, to step up. And what I want to invite you, though, is to keep stepping up. With your friends, with your neighbors, in your classrooms. Because this doesn't change just by one conversation. It's a deep process of change. So good luck. Hope all goes well. Lot of work, but thank you all.
Thank you.